Good evening, welcome to the confined open meeting of the Northborough, Southborough, and Regional School Committees. I'd like to call in the Regional School Committee into session. Northborough.
Oh, I'll call Northborough into session.
The Union.
Can I, because anybody calling, I'll call the Union also.
Session, and Southborough will call into session when they have a quorum.
We're close.
We're closing.
We're closing.
Just as a reminder, the agenda has been revised. We have moved, taken the calendar vote off the agenda to a later date so that we can provide more time and space for further dialogue with the community and community members. And so we have a revised agenda tonight. With that said, our first item is public comment. And just as a reminder of our school committee's policy with public comment, it's, public comment is an encouragement of the public to be able to give us information that we need to make reasoned choices on votes and to express their opinions. The public comment is not for discussion or debate or dialogue between the individuals in the school committee, it's just for a time for us to be listeners. The following rules are, have been adopted. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. All remarks are addressed to the presiding chair. Speakers must begin their comments by stating their name, their city, and address. Public comment time is not to exceed fifteen minutes unless the chair determines an extension is needed, and all speakers should limit their comment to about three minutes, and again, unless the chair warns an extension. Topics are limited to just those items that come before the school committees such as budget and policy, superintendent's performance, comments regarding personnel or students are prohibited. So, also, it's a reminder that besides public comment, emails and writings to the committee are very helpful also for us because each member gets those and disseminated, and if any member is not present, that's another opportunity for them to get that comment. So with that said.
Before I, may I call up Southborough Committee to order?
Thank you.
So I'd like to call us out for committee to order. It's now five forty PM. In attendance are Jessica Devine, Anne Pennett, and myself. And I'd actually like to just say one more thing. I'd like to welcome Jessica Devine to the school committee. She is, we've worked with her before, she was here as an elected school board member, and she's now here as an appointed school board member for the rest of the term, so welcome, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Thanks.
And I guess I should add a fourth. It's where Martin. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, is there any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mitch Cohen, I'm Chair of the Board of Selectmen here in Northborough.
Ed Gud. Oh, yeah. It says full name and address.
I'm Mitch Cohen, twelve Whitney Street.
Thank you.
Speaking as Chair of the Board of Selectmen in Northborough. I attended the, I think it was the early September K to eight school committee. I'm also the Board of Selectmen's liaison to the Northborough K to eight school committee, and suggested that if the school committee was interested in having a dialogue about election locations, because I know that that has been a recurring theme, to let us know, and I'd be happy to place that on the agenda. I haven't received that request, but I know it's still an ongoing item of interest from what I've heard and spoken to some individual people at the tables here. If, if any of particularly the, either the Algonquin or the Northborough K to eight school committee would like me to place that on a Board of Selectmen agenda, I'd be delighted to do that, just ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none at this time, we'll move to our first item agenda, the Superintendent's Mid-Cycle Review.
Thank you very much. This evening I'm providing the school committees with mid-cycle goal update for the twenty-two, twenty-three evaluation process. I am finding it hard to believe that it is six months of the academic year and the fiscal year, so time does go by quickly when you're busy. As I shared in September, my twenty-two, twenty-three goals center on leading the districts and making, the districts in making progress toward Division twenty-twenty-six, educate, inspire, and challenge, and I've aligned my goals with the plan's five strategic objectives, empowering learners, equity of opportunity, healthy and balanced learners, educator learning and leadership, and finance and operations to support teaching and learning. I want to acknowledge that my goals in work include the work of many. My, or the district's success, is dependent on the great work of district leaders, principals, educators, staff, and families. Recently, the Northborough, Southborough, Algonquin leadership team had a chance to gather and have a leadership meeting. At the meeting, we spent time reflecting on what we've accomplished since July till December, and I did include that in your packet. Oftentimes, when we look forward, sometimes we don't stop and think about all what we've accomplished, and I would say that we've accomplished a lot in the past six months. I'm very proud of the leadership team and its efforts and its work toward moving the district's plan forward. So I will review some highlights of each of the five goal areas. The first is empowering learners. So this year, we've launched Universal for Design Learners Explorers as a year-long fifteen professional development point experience. That includes time with educational consultant and time with internally planned sessions. We've also provided the leadership team NASA PD for the Universal Design for Learning Framework at the August retreat, and we're using that model as a model to frame our meetings as a leadership team. And also, we've communicated to the faculty and staff the opportunity to take a thirty-hour course on UDL online at no cost, and this will also be available next year to all educators. The district continues to use collaborative professional learning structures to create opportunities for educators to plan, learn, and discuss their work. This collaboration is essential to moving the work forward and ensuring that students are receiving what they need. This year, the Student Support Services Department created more structured and focused opportunities based on job category. For example, the school psychologists have opportunities for job-alike sessions led by Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor. The district also launched an updated educator evaluation process that included peer observations. Educators are required to observe peers during the twenty-two, twenty-three academic year and engage in conversations with colleagues about their observations, and peer observations provide opportunities for staff to practice their observational skills, apply the ladder of inference, and focus on student tasks, what are we asking students to do? And peer observations will continue throughout the school year. And then lastly, in the summer of twenty-twenty-two, the district launched Parent Square Unified Communication Tool and worked with the leadership team identifying, identifying communication strategies. All ten schools send a weekly newsletter highlighting key events and promising practices, and additionally, we transitioned to Parent Square as the primary vehicle for district communications with parents, including emergency communications. And lastly, the district teaching and learning team has launched a newsletter, a weekly newsletter to all employees that highlight professional learning opportunities, innovative practices, and key events. In regards to equity of opportunity, Julie Doyle has led the work around researching vendors and platforms to provide data visualizations, data dashboards for students for disparate data sources. The work resulted in narrowing the option of analytic view and open architects, and Julie has formed a committee to evaluate these two tools in a deeper aspect and get various perspectives on these tools. The goal is to identify and launch a data analytic platform before the end of the school year. Megan Kelty, the ELA Coordinator, Kathy Lozot, the math coordinator, and Paul Manuti, the data consultant, prepared and distributed ELA and math data sheets to all elementary educators. Dr. Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor and Paul Manuti prepared and distributed ELA data sheets, SEL data sheets from the spring twenty-two collection of SEL Saber screeners, and Megan, the LA Coordinator, distributed ELA data sheets to middle school and elementary educators. Additionally, elevation was implemented in all schools at the beginning of the school year. The intake results for all students whose home language is other than or in addition to English was entered into the tool, and this serves as a platform to monitor and track data and also provide placement letters, reclassification information, and that is being used by our ELD department. And then, on our district PD day, our work with the Anti-Defamation League has continued. On November eighth, pre-K through five educators, specialists, and ESPs attended the foundational level of anti-bias education facilitated, facilitated by the ADL, and this was completed last year by our secondary educators. And also, we engaged in the world of difference year two, and that has gone well thus far. In terms of healthy and balanced learners, Dr. Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor has developed a schedule to work with each school to review Saber's assessment and identify action steps. Dr. Lipton-O'Connor has developed a schedule to readminister the Saber's assessments during the upcoming, upcoming academic year to compare against our baseline data. Principals have dedicated faculty and meeting time to build staff capacity for cultivating social and emotional cultural competence in order to model social-emotional learning and build collaborative trusting relationships. The Castle Framework continues to serve as a guiding framework to build SEL coherence across our district. Mary Ellen Duggan held three wellness committee meetings and worked to establish goals to be completed by the committee this academic year. As a wellness, as a result, the Wellness Committee reviewed the draft wellness policy and developed a plan to analyze and share the Metro West Health Survey data with key stakeholders. Mary Ellen has also led the assessments of the Elementary Health Standards Inventory, which was completed in September, and is working on implementing a timeline for the secondary educators to continue curriculum mapping, which they began in the spring. In terms of the strategic, strategic, strategic objective of educator learning and leadership, we've implemented updated teacher leadership roles in elementary schools. In Northborough, we've created four school-based curriculum leaders in each Northborough Elementary School. The four school-based leaders make up the school-based leadership team. We've replaced open circle and care coordinators with SEL leaders, which is helping Jennifer move the SEL work board in our district. We've also added members of the Social Studies Curriculum Leadership Team for half of the year to continue mapping units and recommend resources for the new standards. And again, the district in the summer of twenty-two launched an updated educator evaluation process with peer observation as a key component of that new process. In terms of finance and operations to support teaching and learning and keeping kids, students safe, we have spent a lot of time at the school level and district level updating and reviewing safety protocols with all, and reviewing these with all building staff. All schools have conducted safety drills, tabletop drills with faculty, faculty and staff, and two meetings were held with the town's police chiefs to review and update security, safety protocols, and those meetings will continue. In the spring and summer of twenty-twenty-two, each facility manager evaluated and assessed key building systems and structures and identified systems and equipment of need of repair or replacement. The facilities teams worked with vendors and are held planning sessions and are working on determining priorities, estimated costs, and timelines for replacement. This work is ongoing, but it has served the budgeting process well in terms of creating capital plans that will help us make key decisions. In the fall of twenty-two, the district submitted documentation in accordance with MSBA's checklist, which included enrollment projections, educational questionnaires, and maintenance and capital plans. In collaboration between the departments, it's critical to put forth a thorough packet to, and accurate information for the NAREY Building Committee for MSBA submission. Through that capital planning process, we have identified PISA school in Northborough as a significant systems that need updating or replacement. Using a similar strategy to the NAREY building project, we are drafting a statement of interest that will be submitted to MSBA when the core building application opens, and that will identify a case for why the building needs to be renovated or updated. This work will include facilities conditions assessment and highlight all the target areas that MSBA requires. So needless to say, there's been a lot of great work that's been happening across the district. Those are a few highlights. I'll also mention that we've been engaged in the budget process, which is really a key work that we do at the central office, and also negotiations, which is not, does not happen every year, but when we are in negotiations, it takes a tremendous amount of time and effort in terms of preparing the documentation and collaboration with our associations, and that is key work that has been started and has gone well thus far. So at this point in time, I will turn it back to the chair, and would be happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
The committee, questions?
Before my question, I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to thank the regional chair, Sean O'Shea, and also the Union Supervisor Number Three, Roger Challen, for the work that they do behind the scenes. Who is it? I'm sorry.
Jen.
Jen, Jen, I'm so sorry. You know, this is not, there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes in the summer coming up with the goals and going over the standards and even getting to this point of the mid-cycle, so I'd like to thank the two chairs for the work that you do behind the scenes to get it to where we are, the point with the superintendent today. Thank you very much. Question I have is on the first one, Greg, the UDL by design. Is that a mandatory course? And I'm glad to see that you are offering it free to the teachers so that we have continuity and everybody is on the same page when you design these. Is it, is it mandatory?
So right now, you know, through Stephanie's leadership, we have the explorers, so the UDL explorers have committed to a year-long exploration of UDL and are taking the course as part of that work. We have offered the course to all other employees if they wish to take it, and we are working with our associations around what are the common understandings and outcomes we want all teachers to have around UDL, and we're setting pathways next year around how educators can develop those skills. One of the pathways will be to take this course, but we're also, in the spirit of UDL, creating several other pathways so that teachers and educators have choices around how they best learn, and what will be common is the outcomes that we hope to achieve with all educators.
And that thirty-hour course, can they, because you mentioned that there was going to be a two-year, so can they take that course over two years or does it, is it one year?
It's a year, it's a year long from when they first log in and start, so it's asynchronous, and so they have a year from the date they first log in to the time they're asked to complete the course. So it really depends on when a person begins the course, so folks who begin the course in August of twenty-three will have August of twenty-four to complete.
And the other question is, you mentioned that they could get the PDP points, which goes towards their evaluation and certification. Have you also tied into any colleges or universities where the teachers on their own could take it for college credit and do, you'd have to do more work compared to what you do for PDP points?
Yeah, so we've had conversations around in-service district credit, so not necessarily partnering with a college or university, but allowing educators, if they take this course and do a, some type of project, like application project with their class, that potentially they can get three district and service credits to move on the salary scale. We're in the process of evaluating what that impact will be in terms of overall cost, but it is something we are having discussions with our associations.
That's, that's really good. And my only other comment was, you said this was going to be two years, right? I would like to, you know, I think it's very worthwhile, it's been around for a long time, but UDL design, is that in the third year, if we have new teachers, which we're probably going to have, is have them to, the same ability to take the course, because I think they're all, then they will all be on the same page. So thank you for taking this, it's, it's hard, it's not easy, but thank you for the initiatives, I appreciate it.
And I would share that we do know this is a multi-year journey beyond two years. We have the first two years mapped out, but a lot more work and discussion around what year three, four, and five will look like will take place in the next, you know, six months and year ahead.
Thank you.
Lauren?
Thank you. Greg, you mentioned implementing teacher leadership roles in the elementary schools. Can you just explain how those curriculum leaders sort of came to be? Are they new hires? Are they teachers who shifted their roles within the schools?
Sure. So we've had a longstanding practice of having a distributed leadership model specifically at the elementary level, where we have curriculum leaders in math, ELA, science, and history and social science. They have served our district well over the years, but what we looked at this year is that one of the unintended outcomes of having that model is that all of these curriculum teams at the elementary level are working at the same time on moving curriculum initiatives forward. Being an elementary educator means like you have too much on your plate. So we, with Stephanie and the team, have looked at is what do our principals need in terms of leading the building? So we've shifted some of those curriculum positions to building-based leadership positions, and they serve as the leadership team in that building to help move some of these curriculum initiatives, at the same time trying to control the number of curriculums that we are looking at and moving forward in terms of redesign or study. And Stephanie has identified like ELA and mathematics as two that are high priority, where social studies and science is taking not as, much of an active role this year, and it will shift over time.
And I'll just add that they're existing teachers just having an additional leadership role, so it's not their full-time job, it's just a leadership opportunity.
That helps. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Just had a comment about the wellness area, and I just want to commend you and Mary Ellen, it looks like Mary Ellen's been busy, there's been, looks like a lot of work in this area, and at the risk of jumping ahead, the wellness policy I thought was very good and comprehensive, so it's just, it's one of the tenants of our strategic plan, so it's really, it's great to see, you know, putting some teeth behind that, so, well done.
Who else?
So just, again, I'll end the way I began, just acknowledging that my job is to hire people who are much brighter than I am and let them do their work, which isn't hard for me, you know?
But not all years.
Yeah. So I'm just, we're very fortunate to have, and I'm very fortunate as a superintendent to have a highly qualified and dedicated and committed leadership team from, you know, assistant superintendents to directors to principals to educators, who truly enjoy working together and have a common vision and mission around the work is about kids and students and how we can make sure that they get the best experience possible in the classroom, so. And again, it feels awkward sharing a mid-cycle report about my goals, when I view my goals as really a collective team goal that we have.
Thank you for the update. Yeah, certainly, although I'm hard to condense it off.
Yeah.
In this, personnel?
Yeah, so just, I want to highlight a couple personnel items in the report. The first is that we did have an administrative assistant start in October. Unfortunately, she has decided that the position isn't what she thought it might be, and has decided to let us know sooner than later that she's, is moving on. So, you know, I asked, is there anything we could have done differently to support? And she was very clear, it was nothing, it was nothing, the office staff was very friendly and supportive, it just wasn't aligned to what she had thought it was. With that said, we've, we've been able to hire in that time a former Algonquin graduate who has her degree in sociology from Mouston State. She applied for the position, she's bilingual, she loves to organize and be part of the team, so she will be starting on Monday, and we're very excited for her to start. And then, also instructional technology and technology in general, it's been very difficult to keep those positions staffed. We did learn that one of our data specialists and instructional technology specialists is leaving, that's Olivia Kane at the high school. She works very closely with Julie Doyle around kind of data integration, so Olivia is going to be taking, is going to be leaving our organization, and it provides us an opportunity to think about the direction we're heading in terms of data and analytics, and what type of person and position do we want to have in our district to support that work moving forward? So although it's a loss, it's also an opportunity to think and reflect about what we need in terms of data analytics. But technology positions, it's been very challenging, it's probably been the most challenging area in terms of retaining people. There seems to be a lot of opportunity for people to grow and expand in the IT sector at this current time.
Questions? Policy development and distribution, there's a lot, the policy committees have been spending a lot of time, a lot of cross-outs with a lot of additions, and so this is just the first reading of many of them, not for adoption yet, but so it's your first chance to go over them. I don't know if we need to speak to any, or why?
Well, Mary Ellen is here, and I think just in terms of the joint policy subcommittee and our strategy to look at, as a joint committee looking at health and wellness policies in particular, so the joint policy subcommittee met and identified a number of policies, and this is the first round of policies that we, the committee, decided to take on. Mary Ellen has done tremendous amount of work with the Wellness Committee on drafting and updating and making sure our policies are contemporary and legal, and Mary Ellen, I'm not sure if you want to spend some time just talking briefly about some of the policies and how they were developed and the thinking that went into the development.
You can come up here if you want, there's an extra seat.
Oh, I will come right up there.
I'm going to give for grants too, right? Okay.
Mm-hmm. It's outside.
It's outside.
So the, when Greg said we were updating all the wellness and health and wellness policies, they definitely needed to be looked at. As you can tell, just from the wellness policy alone, it went from a paragraph or two to five or six pages. And the reason for that is because there's a lot that goes into the wellness policy. We referenced the laws, a lot of the laws, and I had applied, they have wellness coaches, and I thought, what better way to get us started on this than to apply for a wellness coach, but our wellness policy didn't meet enough of the criteria for us to even get a wellness coach, so. So that was where we dug in first. Erin was on the committee, and we just looked at what, there are checklists that you can go through about what your wellness policy has to include, and now it includes all of the, what's needed, plus we added in the social-emotional pieces because that is really important. There are other things besides, by law, it has to include the physical activity, physical education, nutrition guidelines, and nutrition education, but there's so much more to wellness that we thought was important to include in the policy. That's where we started with that one.
I don't know if anybody on the committee wanted to add any other thoughts, I mean, it was extensive, and yeah, it also helps us, right, receive grants or potentially, so it, it didn't just need to be updated, but it'll allow us to have access to more resources too.
I think it's great to have it written, so if someone said, we referred someone to the policy, they wouldn't have to go look up all the laws to find out what our policy actually is.
We spent a lot of time talking also about like, like food preparation is in it as opposed to like physical activity, it's a very broad, yeah, a lot of pieces to it. Questions? Yeah?
I was just going to say, so the, the thing that you were saying that you were going to apply for a coach but couldn't because you didn't have a thing, is there like a deadline for that?
No, they usually, they start, it was new last No, they usually, they start, it was new last G, this is like the second year they've had that ability to have a coach to help you with your wellness policy, your wellness committee lead you in the right direction. Um, so I'm sure it's gonna be something that's every year.
Okay. I didn't know if, like, we needed to, like, you know, push this through quicker.
It's from, yeah, from Desi and the nutrition, all of that.
Uh, Joan?
Um, I had a question on the wellness policy, that was the first one, uh, J three, week twenty. Is that something new there, the, um, secondary food notification form and the elementary one, the primary one? That form, I noticed that on the secondary food notification form, it talked about Massachusetts School Nutrition Standards for Competitive Foods and Beverage Act. So, is that something new that we have to do, that is mandated by the state?
It's not something new. Um, the forms are, are district forms, they're not state forms. So, um, they've been being used in our elementary schools when food was coming into the classroom for whatever reason. Um, some schools in our district did not allow food into the classroom at all. Um, so we thought that it was important to be consistent throughout the district at the elementary level, um, to, to put the limitations on what food was allowed to be consumed while in school. And that, we had that written there, it was food provided for the individual by their parents or guardians, provided by the school nurse, or from the caf- purchased in the cafeteria. Um, any other food that's used in the curriculum, which would be if they were making, um, skeletons out of pasta, or they're dissecting a lima bean, or they're using any kind of dough with flour in it, whatever reason that food might be used, some, a lot of science experiments use some food, then the food notification form would need to be filled out.
Okay.
And then in the secondary, they do use it at the middle schools, um, it, it's for grade six to eight, it's not for the high school, because there's food classes, there's culinary classes, um, and things like that. But grade six to eight in both middle schools use it presently. They have a form that is filled out, that's run by the nurses if this food coming into the classroom. And this will just make it more streamlined, that everybody will do it.
Okay. I was glad to see those forms, uh, especially seeing in the elementary level when it said it will not be consumed because of the allergies the kids may have, so that goes out to the parents, so they know. And parents are notified ahead of time of what's gonna be used in the classroom.
Correct, and it won't be consumed.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Kamal?
Um, maybe it's more of a comment, um, but I wasn't clear that we explicitly said that the policies extend to not just the, in school, um, hours, but also like before and after school program. Now, now that we have, like, the before and after school program rolled up into Southborough, uh, and maybe Northborough has some before and after school programs too, but they should be following the same.
So, I think programs that are ours, as in Southborough is now, they would follow these guidelines, I'm not sure.
And we have to put like an asterisk, or to say all programs underneath the district's purview, or, you know, like ki- that kind of nuanced language.
I would just say that before and after school programs are governed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and early childhood, so there are, um, parallel requirements. I think we can have a conversation with, um, N E D P around our policy and making sure they're following the policy, um, at this time. But in terms of Southborough, Kamali, to your point, since it's part of our organization, we'll make sure that they're aware, they're, they are aware of it.
I think we will go through the time, that it's through the school day. So, that's from midnight until thirty minutes after the end of the scheduled school day. But these are, these are not made up times, it is from the guidelines that were put forth, um, from the, the national school lunch program. So, I think that it would be, um, during that time, everything's supposed to meet these guidelines for the safe food, you know, for the food.
You said midnight until?
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion around that.
We had a lot of discussion around that.
That was the biggest discussion, but it is from the national school lunch program.
Yeah, it's basically from the regulations and laws, not something for us to change. Unique for sure. Joan?
Um, I had a question about the timeline, and I wanted to probably ask you, Sean, as the chair. Is, you're part of that policy subcommittee, is, and ask same time as to Mary Ellen, is there a need to get any of these policies in and approved as soon as possible, rather than waiting to the next combined meeting? Because sometimes we have passed, if everybody's in agreement, we have passed over the first reading to the final approval. So, I didn't know if any of these are time-sensitive.
I, I would defer to the superintendent, but we did not discuss any.
Yeah, and I think one of the important part, uh, components of developing policy is public comment and input. So, I, the policies that are before you this evening do not require us to move any faster than our typical policy process. These all have been provided to legal counsel, and we've received input and have incorporated legal counsel input. Uh, after this evening, we'll post these and communicate these policies to the community for public comment and feedback. The joint policy subcommittee will reconvene, and then hopefully at that point, we'll incorporate any changes. And then lastly, we'll bring these forward, hopefully at the March combined meeting. But no need to accelerate the process.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Kathy?
I was gonna say, so Joan, we, um, as a committee, like, right, like, we sat down to decide, like, what policies we were gonna, um, work on for that year. So, whether it's wellness, or last year was all H R, like, so it's all, we have a whole grouping that we're doing each year. So, and it's not like specific.
Yeah.
To vote right away, but.
Right, and I don't think, like, we're not gonna lose out on a funding opportunity, because these aren't finalized yet, so.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And I think all of these are followed by what our policies, you know, says we follow the law.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just not explicit.
And then the recommended for rescind will take place in March, and they're basically corresponding policies.
I had a question on concussion policy, if we're done with the other, actually, a couple of questions. One, there's a pre-participation form that we require, it talks about, and asks about concussion history and so forth. Is that our own requirement, or is that a state?
State. So, that is part of the, um, you, yeah, to me, I'm not up to that, I'm sorry. But when we said it, there is a pre-participation form that the state has, but if you have something in your registration form that is similar, you can use that.
And then was there any discussion about requiring the impact testing?
We did have that discussion, um, back and forth, as you know, it's always a discussion whether to require it or recommend it. I think, um, some people are very passionate about wanting to require it. And we have had more, much more participation in the last few years, as my, the coaches have had one of their practices be in the lab, where they can do it, the impact testing. So, I guess that's all to.
I guess I'm leaning towards requiring it, because, I mean, it seems like such a simple thing, it takes fifteen, twenty minutes. And like you said, they can do it in the lab, and we did it, it would just become something you have to do if you wanna play football and whatever other sports we decide warrant, if not all.
Also not every year, so.
It's every two years?
Exactly, it's every two years, so you have to do it twice, you know.
You know, I think one of the conversations I believe we had as, as, uh, joint committees is what do we look at eighth grade? Before they enter the high school, do we administer an impact testing in eighth grade? That would be freshman sophomore year, and then administer it again in sophomore, and that would cover the, the final two years. So, I think it's definitely something we could take back to the, the joint policy subcommittee and have a conversation around. And also, um, I'd, I'd like to get some guidance from legal counsel too around what are the considerations if we make this, um, a requirement of an athlete?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, also, and sometimes we've also had reference to procedural, procedural things, that can change. I don't, I don't know if that's an option in that too.
So, I think in our protocols?
Protocols, yeah.
It's recommended, and it gives you the timeframe and the protocols, but it's not part of the policy, so.
Could it be required in the protocol? But that's not policy, that's why I'm wondering.
So, I, we would have to bring it, as Greg said, probably to legal and make sure.
I guess that's our next subcommittee meeting discussion. I wrote it down.
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, Jennifer, right?
Jess.
Jess.
So, um, common, except in the eighties. Um, so, I'm a little rusty at this, it's been a year and a half since I've been here. Um, do we give feedback now, or do we wait until, ask, like, about specific policy stuff? Like, questions about, so, the to, so the alcohol, tobacco, and drug policy? Um, are we on that, or are we just talking about one of this?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, um.
I guess, is there any more on concussion, just so we're not disjointed? Okay.
Okay. Um, I'm just curious, the, the, I was just asking Katura, because, uh, change is that, I, I guess everybody, it's the same policy for everybody now, like, all the, all the subcommittees meet together now, so, um, so I'm thinking about actually the high school level. Um, I guess this would be applicable for middle school too. It says that, um, any student who's under the influence of drugs or alcohol beverages prior to, it says, it talks about school-sponsored activity, I mean, it's just a little nuanced, but it doesn't say, like, when you're at school. Like, if you're, like, caught smoking in the bathroom or something, it gets, it's just talking about school-related activities. So, because at first I was like, what do they do if they catch kids on property smoking, or, you know, drinking, or whatever?
You mean, like, during the school day type thing?
They have one on drug abuse. There's another drug abuse policy.
If the first sentence says all of that things, or, or controlled substances on school property, at school functions, or at any school-sponsored event.
First sentence.
But I'm talking about the disciplinary action part. It says that you'll be subject, subjected to disciplinary action at a school-sponsored activity.
Is this J two seventy, which one?
J two seventy.
Okay.
Any student who's under the influence of drugs or al-, because I was, because then I would think, so are they not being subject to disciplinary action if they're caught at school and only schools?
It says before.
Sponsored activities, it's just a nuance, but I'm sure sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids will be looking for nuances if they get in trouble, so I'm just thinking maybe, would it be good to make it clear?
Can I, can I add a, so, would it make sense in the sentence after that to say any student who violates this policy or is under the influence of dr-, you know, that kind of thing, so that it makes it clear that it's not just?
At a dance, or at a football game, or, yeah, you know.
Yeah. Just to kind of encompass that first sentence.
Yeah. Just, it, it just struck me that it seemed like it was only a few hours school-sponsored activity.
Thank you.
It's only a challenge when they find the nuance, nuance after.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions about any policies? Whoever's looking at them, yeah. Okay, so that's the first reading, that'll go back to the subcommittee, and then it'll come back for a second and, and a vote at that time. Correct, 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 okay. Uh, number six on the agenda is action on minutes. So, we have first, um, action on the combined open meeting minutes of September twenty-first, and we need motions and, um, votes on those minutes. Joan?
Um, I'll take the first one. Um, I will move for Northborough, the region, and the union to accept the combined open meeting minutes of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, as stated, written.
How do we second that? Second?
Well.
Bryce seconded it.
Can, can Bryce?
Second for everybody?
No, you can, no, well, I, he can second for Northborough, I can second for the union.
I'll second for the region.
Okay, so Kelly for the union, and Chris for the region, so we could vote one at a time, how about Northborough?
Northborough, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Uh, region passes unanimously?
The union, all in favor?
Then that passes, okay. Um, then we have action on the combined.
Um, does Southborough have to move?
Why do we do that?
So, move for Southborough. Second, Kamal.
All in favor?
That's Roger's shot.
This was one of these combined? Okay. I was doing so well, okay. Now, action on the combined executive session minutes of June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is to?
Is it to retain, or to?
Release. To release the, and it will be a roll call, roll call vote. Would Southborough like to lead the way?
So, so I'll move, uh, to accept the action on the combined executive session minutes of June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to release.
Second.
So, Roger makes the motion, Katura seconds.
Are you motioning just for Southborough, or for the union also?
And for the union.
Thank you.
Second for union.
Okay, there you go.
Uh, who's that, Lauren for the union? Okay, a vote.
Roll call vote, Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
I vote yes for Southborough and for the union.
Okay, so it passes for Southborough, the union one, with roll call vote, please?
You can do it.
She can't talk, she wants you to do it.
Okay, um, I don't know.
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Joan?
Myself, yes.
Yes, Kelly can, yes.
Jess? Yes.
Again, yes.
And, no, okay, that's it, okay, perfect.
Okay, um, so we need a Northborough motion and a region motion.
So, move for Northborough and the region.
Joan?
For Northborough.
Erin seconds.
Erin and?
For Northborough.
For Northborough and?
Second.
Kathy for the, the region. And I'm calling everybody's name because whoever takes the minutes appreciates me saying the names. Um, okay, so, uh, uh, all in favor for the region roll call vote, so Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen? Kathy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, for Northborough, Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself, Kelly, yes, passes. Unanimous. And that's why our next meeting doesn't start till seven, people.
Um, one more item on our combined agenda. Again, this is a public, our last public comment session of the, of the combined meeting. Any, any public comments? See, none at this time, we need motions to adjourn, um, the region, so, Southborough.
Can I ask one question before adjourn? I know you guys wanna get your meeting on. So, um, our next combined, which is in, um, March, so I know, like, this is Northborough we're doing here. Are we also doing Southborough here, or are we going to Trotter?
To be determined.
Okay. Just so we know.
So, we don't go to Meligan?
Did you, did you go to Meligan?
Not yet, no, I, I called, I was like, where are you going? And it's like, where are you going?
You did?
Still have it early, I forgot.
So, um, a region, um, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So moved. Chris?
Seconded.
Matthew, uh, all in favor? Uh, so, uh, the region is adjourned at six twenty-seven.
So, move for Northborough?
No, Northborough's not.
Sorry.
Yep.
Never mind.
You can move for the union.
I'll move for the new, for the union.
Second. Jen?
Um, it's, do I, okay, the union, uh, go ahead, vote.
Unanimous, we adjourn six twenty-seven.
Southborough.
Uh, so, motion to adjourn for Southborough.
Katura, okay, and a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jess?
Jess, okay.
Um, so that's six twenty-seven, all in favor?
Adjourned, and we leave the rest of the meeting to Northborough.
Uh, for Northborough, I think what we will do is our meeting doesn't start till seven, so we should, uh, uh, we don't adjourn. Do we, should we adjourn, and then, yeah, I feel like maybe we should, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Summon.
Uh, motion by Lauren, seconded by Joan, so we will adjourn the combined Northborough School Committee meeting. It is unanimous. school committee meeting. It is unanimous. It's six twenty-eight, thank you.